Okay, great, thank you. We are here October twenty ninth, twelve thirty, for a special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We have three agenda items, we're good to go on all three? Okay, great. So, I'm good on the agenda items? Okay, we'll just dive right in. Agenda item number one, discussion and consideration of a bid award to the Brendel Group Inc. for the implementation of the Climate Action Plan.
Yes, thank you. So, we successfully received a grant award from DOLA in October of two thousand twenty three to do a climate action plan for Lake County. So, we posted the RFP on August fifteenth for firms for proposals. That closed on September thirteenth, and we received a total of nine proposals. They range anywhere from forty to a hundred pages. So, it was a little bit of an extended process to review all of those. But, the review committee included myself, Melissa Kendrick, our Deputy Director of CPD, and Mayor Dana Green. And after an extensive review of all nine of those proposals, our top three highest scoring were evaluated against their references. The Brendel Group received very high scores. Overall, ninety-eight out of a hundred, based on our scoring criteria, that included understanding and completeness, firm qualification and experience, firm capability and references, project approach, and management qualifications, overall value and financial capability. You all, I think, should have received the top three proposals in the packet that you've requested. I'm happy to answer some questions about those. But overall, we felt that the Brendel Group had a very confident proposal, it was thorough, it highlighted challenges with representation and engagement and communities similar to ours. They have worked with ICLI in the past on similar projects, which we are a member of.
Could you please say what that is?
ICLI, can you explain that a little more than I can?
International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, or something like that.
Agglomeration.
They're along, I mean, they've been around for decades trying to promote local jurisdictions engaging on sustainability and environmental and now climate issues. So, they support, they provide support on things like emissions inventories, you know, and, you know, kind of model policies, so.
The project manager for Brendel Group lives in Pontchar Springs, so not very far from here, very familiar with our area. And they will have a bilingual, a dedicated bilingual staff member that will lead the engagement efforts. So, that was another, another component we felt was really important for us. To name all of the proposals and their associated budget, right?
That would be fantastic, yes.
So, we have Brendel Group out of Fort Collins as kind of their headquarters. They came in at one thirty even, one thirty was our cap for the project. Blue Strike out of, they headquartered out of California, came in at one hundred twenty eight thousand eight fifty. Eco Engineers came in at one twenty five. Iconergy out of Boulder came in right at one thirty. Clear out of Carbondale came in at one twenty nine thousand six hundred. CIW out of Buffalo, New York came in at one hundred and ten thousand. Lotus Engineering out of Denver came in at one hundred twenty nine thousand eight seventy seven. SSG out of Vancouver, B.C. came in at one twenty six thousand eight seventy five. And Ecomotion out of Glendale, California came in at one twenty six sixty.
What did Brendel come back at?
Right at one thirty.
One thirty.
Which.
So, it was the highest, but.
Yeah.
It got the highest scores.
One other came, Iconergy came in right at one thirty, a few others in that one twenty nine range. The only one that was like quite a bit lower was CIW out of Buffalo, New York at one ten. Everything else hovered right around about a five thousand dollar difference.
Any questions?
No questions.
Remind me the scope and the length, not, sorry, not in this room. Well, maybe a very high level scope, but length of time that they projected to take.
Yes, so Brendel Group, part of, one of the things that stuck out to us on our review committee with Brendel Group was, out of our top three was the timeframe. So, they were proposing to take a solid twelve months. If it takes less time, then that's perfectly all right. Our, one of our other top three, Iconergy, was proposing a six to eight month proposal in scope. So, we felt that it was, having that full twelve month period was more appropriate for us to have as like the larger window. And if it takes a little bit less time for certain parts of the project, then, then we have that wiggle room.
My concern with this, this is the community engagement piece. Just looking at their strategies here is stuff that we've been down this road before on a lot of, on a lot of projects on this piece. And I'm talking specifically with our, I mean, just in general, but in with our Spanish-speaking community in particular, these things have not worked. Their, the digital feedback piece, I'm very skeptical that they would get much of any kind of a feedback from that segment of our community through that means. The one-on-one, they might have better luck, but that's gonna take some, a lot of bandwidth to set that up. And then the in-person community engagement events. Again, we've been doing, we've been beating our head against the wall on this, and we just don't get any kind of meaningful representation, even from the community at large, let alone the immigrant community. So, and they talk about innovation and stuff like all that. Well, I wanna see it, because this is, this is, to me, is not gonna.
I hear what you're saying.
It's not gonna be effective.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I think the thing to remember here too is that all of these firms have a standard approach that they propose. And then when we have our initial meetings with them and really highlight where is our community particularly struggling with plans like this, with stakeholder engagement, with community participation, figuring out how to cater that specific piece to our community's needs will be one of the, one of the very first conversations. And we'll certainly not enact procedures in this, in this space without having a vetted plan that will work for us. And I think that's just a component of any plan that we do. In any effort similar to this, we're going to run into those challenges. I think unfortunately, that's the nature of Lake County. And I don't know that there's any firm that we had for these nine proposals had like a new idea or suggestion for something that would work specifically for Lake County.
Well, yeah, I'd like to see some innovation.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, because, yeah, because we're, we're all this stuff, these surveys and things like studies and all this stuff, the participation community-wide is like this.
Right, yeah, we're seeing, I mean, what, on the, on the pros master plan, what was it, like two or three hundred responses out of like seven thousand communities?
The most recent thing on, you know, survey on the pool was one hundred respondents.
Right. And I think that's something that we're seeing across the board in our community, right?
Oh, I know, you're right, but.
It's such a small percentage of folks that are engaging in specific ways, right? So, like, we, we can't, we can't catch everyone. We know that, we're never gonna be able to reach all seventy-three hundred community members. But, I agree, I think this is something we need to have a very serious conversation about with any firm that we work with.
Yeah, and I, and I do know that environmental justice is a real concern for our Spanish-speaking community.
Right.
Yeah, so, I, I hope that they pay particular attention or, you know, are very intentional about communicating with that segment of the, of the community.
Certainly.
So, their voices are heard.
Right, and like I highlighted too, I think this is lower down in the proposal, they've got their staff that will be dedicated to this particular project, actually, I could hire project team H seven. Yeah, so, Paulina Simosa, the Associate Planner, is gonna be our Stakeholder Engagement Leader. So, she is bilingual. And this says her work centers around equity, diversity, and inclusion in the planning profession. So, she has done a lot of work in this particular sphere. And I think it will also be important for us to highlight here the, the need to partner with our trusted community partners. So, that will be a huge part of our community engagement. So, while the firm will lead it, we're not at all proposing that it will only be the firm and folks outside of our community managing that piece.
And how, I think you raised this point in other contexts too, like, like standalone events are really hard to get attendance at, like rather versus going to events that already exist, you know, for certain portions of our community seem to be, yeah, so things like that, yeah.
And on that.
Well, I was gonna answer like to your question, I mean, just to, I think we've said this before, but I mean, I think interesting useful stuff will come out of the Climate Action Plan, but like a lot of, a big reason why we're doing this is it's a, it's sort of a, it's a requirement to access other grants. And it's also helpful or even a requirement for other nonprofits in the community to access sort of energy and climate-related grants. So, again, I think it will be useful, but it really is sort of like a gatekeeping, you know, thing we have to tick the box on to access a whole bunch of state grants.
How often do they want us to redo that?
Oh, I don't know, hopefully.
Do the plan?
Yeah, a plan.
Ideally, this would be a one-and-done plan, but the follow-up piece would likely be the greenhouse gas inventory component. So, we do a baseline greenhouse gas inventory that identifies where all of our emissions in the community are coming from. And then once we do project implementation, we can then compare a new GHD inventory to the baseline and see, are those things actually working? Are those things reducing our emissions? Are they having an impact?
Is this.
Climax gonna be part of that?
Part of.
Climax operations, are they gonna assess what's going on out there now?
I, I think we would need to have a conversation about what scope of emissions we need to be looking at, but technically, they are a part of the community and this would be a community-wide plan. So, I would say yes, with the caveat that it is a private business.
And, and also like one thing that came up with some previous planning that Excel did is if you don't pull them out of some of the numbers, they just swamp the data.
Yeah, it's, it's use your figures.
So, you certainly, right, you, yeah, so you need to kind of pull their electricity use out or their emissions, whether, yeah.
So, we, we might include them in an inventory and then pull that specific data, knowing that it's going to be a little non-representative of the rest of the community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I would, sorry, and I would hope we get into things like, you know, all this single occupancy vehicle commuting up to there. Like, that's gotta be a thing, right? It's not their direct, that wouldn't show up in their inventory, but it'll, right, so, yeah.
And these folks are experts, they've done hundreds, not thousands of this kind of work. So, I would defer to the Brendel Group and their plan, identifying that this is a concern for us. Like, I can't imagine this is a unique thing to Lake, though, that they've worked on this type of issue in other communities too.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, I was reading Summit Counties and like with all the resorts and large industry and I seventy corridor, I couldn't quite understand how they were generating the GH, GHG?
Greenhouse.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. And like, or if assigning that to a specific, like, I mean, they did have transportation. And I was like, wow, how are they defining transportation? Like, if you have I seventy corridor, is that Summit County's responsibility or is that? So, it's just, and there was a lot of like language around incentives, which I think we'll struggle to find to encourage people to, to do differently. But then a lot of just partnerships with the resorts in their own flemes to do better and get neutrality or, or whatnot.
Right, at the end of the day, we can't make anyone do anything outside of county operations. Like, you have jurisdiction over county operations. We don't have jurisdiction over what small businesses in town do, right? So, the, the plan.
We control land code, and building code.
Well, that's true, yeah, I mean, depending, depending on.
Yeah, well, to the, yeah, to that note though, I do think like, I mean, I, well, I might be worrying about a larger problem.
Just saying.
There's strategic ways.
We control landfill fees.
We do, there's strategic ways that we can encourage folks, right? And, and do some level of enforcement of some of these action items. But overall, like, it is intended to be a useful plan that we can take action items from and, and identify what's the biggest thing for our buck. You know, with, whether it's county operations or it's community-wide or it's like targeting a specific sector. And then like Jeff, like Jeff is saying, going after those project dollars, the implementation dollars types of work.
I'm really curious how that, because I was reading too like San Juan and Silverton's amendment to URAE and San Miguel's plans, right, and like thinking the smaller, on the smaller scale. And they have things like housing, local housing to help people work where they live and not commute to like that, those cascading effects. They had dark skies, which we have been working towards. And I, I think, well, and also your kind of like enthusiasm about like Land use code, right? I do think there's this.
Just a factual point.
It is, it is, but it is, it is also a concern of mine, even like having the highest restrictions, because there's a lot of language in some of the ones I read of like beyond code, like going beyond code, above and beyond, which I just hope that, you know, we have seen without the resources to offer incentives for attracting businesses or, or having retrofitting either individual homes or existing businesses as Lake County without those resources. Like, I just don't wanna make, I just don't wanna strangle our opportunities for economic development. And I would really love to, I think I brought it up last time we talked about this, but I think it'll be really important to figure out who's in like, if it's called the Steering Committee for this process or what. And I, I really hope that involves Jackie and CPD and you all and Adam Ducharme with Economic Development, so that we can make sure that it's.
Inclusive?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and also, and something we, so, so I was involved in like comments on the RFP,
Rice with water.
but not the selection committee. So, even in the RFP drafting, like we really, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we really tried to sort of have a, I don't think there's like explicit criteria, but like not just pick a cookie cutter thing where it's gonna be like, here's the menu that some other community did, go do this. Like, so I think to your point, it's like, yeah, there's like a lot of stuff that's gonna be really challenging in this community, whether it's older housing stock or, you know, income levels or, you know, the climate and, you know, reliance on winter heating, you know, all the things. So, I, I really, yeah, really an echo that, like.
Elevation.
Let's not just like pick the shiny object if, like if we're here, let's not try to do this first.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, there's a lot of basics.
Yeah, and there's, yeah, there's like water and wastewater treatment in people's plans, which I think is an incredibly important thing, not only for efficiency and supporting the housing, right? That cascades into supporting living and working locally and being able to stay here, but also feeds into like environmental health issues and water quality.
And I'll also say, I mean, something that's always been in mind is like, I, I don't think in doing this plan, like for me anyway, it's never been the intention to try to like out boulder boulder, right? Or, you know, like we're trying, right? I think everyone knows what I mean, right? No, I mean, like, there's, there's some real hard stuff, but I also don't want this community to get left behind. I mean, there's so much money on the table, and I think there're gonna be requirements in coming down in code and whatever, you know, that if we don't, if we don't catch up, we are gonna get left behind. And expensive stuff is gonna come down the road. Could be fifteen years from now, but if we don't start trying to catch up with this stuff, I think it's gonna hurt this community.
Yeah.
And this date has already set its emissions reduction goal, so those are gonna come to us one way or another.
Yeah.
This type of plan helps us get out in front of it and identify things that are important for Lake County.
Speaking of getting the participation of the community with the comp planning going on at the same time, are we going to marry a lot of these?
Yeah, Melissa and I.
No, they can't, they can't talk, so.
Melissa and I have talked about that, Julia and I have also talked about that with their two thousand twenty-five review of the Public Health Plan.
Yes.
So, our hope, and this is something we highlighted in the RFP as well, for firms to know, these things are happening simultaneously. We need all of these plans and organization to be working together so that we're not asking the same question eight times and nine different ways at eleven different settings, right? So, if we're collecting the same information that public health needs, rather than having public health duplicate that in their sessions, pulling that piece out and saying, we've already got that information for you.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and, and really trying to make these things work cohesively rather than compete for time and time of attention.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, so I understand, and that also applies, you know, there's a climate impacts and resilience component of the Climate Action Plan, so like let's not duplicate the CWPB or, you know, the Hazard Reduction Plan.
Hazard mitigation.
Hazard mitigation thing?
You know, and, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering.
And all of those components were called out in the RFP as well. So, we have a, we have a piece there to, to really highlight. These are the plans that exist, these are, these are the ones that are in progress or under review. Let's make sure that we're identifying where there's overlap and how we can work collaboratively.
Right, right, okay. That was, that was a tinier question I had, like, and it might be when, when do we get to engage or like dump the knowledge before departure, sort of? And or keep being a part of, right? But like things like Summit County's plan has a lot of forestation, but that's years old and it's not talking at all about like fuel mitigation, really? So, I was like, oh, I wonder how obsolete and outdated these, you know, perspectives are in sequestering carbon monoxide and, you know, all the things and how, how that has changed in today's climate, so would be curious about that. But also, not being left behind, like taking the opportunity. I do, I do, with some of it, if this plan at all might even mention the opportunity of generating our own renewable energy resources, I really want us to revisit or visit simultaneously the opportunity and like the idea of having a think partner similar to what So Watch Outliers brought to us. Because I think there is real value in going through that exercise at the same time and figuring out if that is even something that we can generate interest and investment from outside investment into this community. And it would be something that, it might be the only thing that can allow this community to like afford to progress at that level of impact. So, can, can we look at that seriously?
I'm not familiar with the.
I'm asking these guys, really.
I can't remember what language was in the Climate Action Plan. I would hope that would get called out. I mean, it's that economic development piece, but also, you know, in the push to electrify stuff, you know, if you become more resilient on the grid, like increasing the resilience of the grid and having more local generation, you know, is a key component of that. So, I mean, I would hope that would get called out. And then there's like more grants than you can even like shake a stick at for that. I mean, like there's microgrids is the new buzzword, but there's like a lot of stuff, distributed generation.
I think, I think this might be the, the piece that you're talking about in the RFP task number seven. Let me give you a hot, really high-level overview. There are nine proposed tasks of the Climate Action Plan. Task one is project management, so it's kind of an ongoing overview. Task two is a GHD inventory, that's that baseline study. Task three is an existing conditions analysis. Task four is the vulnerability and resiliency assessment. Task five is the public and stakeholder engagement. Task six is a GHG modeling, so that basically shows you business as usual. If we keep going, how we're going, what does that model look like over X amount of years? Task seven, this is the piece that I wanted to highlight, cost analysis, measurement, and strategy prioritization. So, the consultants here are gonna identify available grants, rebates, tax incentives, or other funding sources as applicable to the strategy and the county. So, this is the piece where we would let them fly free, more or less, get creative, identify what those pieces are, and it might be something like how do we partner with, you know, a third-party entity and have that, that additional income from renewables?
Would it be amazing if we could get to those places at the same time?
As.
Like the completion of this and the suggestions and then opening that up for funding and knowing like a little bit more about where we might wanna steer and focus with any real opportunities?
I, I don't know if this is what you're saying, and I think, and there's nothing stopping us from, I mean, if we just know there's gonna be some things we wanna look at, even if it's from an economic development lens or, you know, what, what do we need to do in terms of zoning in our code to encourage small-scale distributed renewables coming in? There's nothing stopping us from doing that sooner, we don't have to wait twelve months.
Right.
Right, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, a, a little bit. I just, I guess I'm just trying to advocate for like trying to look at that for the next couple of months and engage. That's all.
Don't ask, sorry, you mean?
If, if I can steer us back just a little bit, specifically reviewing the Brendel Group as the firm to lead us, I think these are all really great ideas. And personally, I don't make the final decision, I don't think, on this, but personally, I'd love to have all of your opinions in the task force for the Climate Action Plan, even once you've exited your roles, or maybe not, I don't know, we'll see. But as far as like this discussion, I'd, I'd love to answer any other questions you have specifically about the Brendel Group, their approach to, just so that we can get the ball rolling with the contract, that's why I asked for this meeting, that we can. Yeah, so that we can try to push that a little faster. I don't know how long that process is going to take. Legal things, who knows? Probably not too long, but I'll let Chris come on that.
No, thanks for bringing this back. So, I mean, may, maybe the question is, any questions on the sort of award process, the RFP process and the award recommendation from the review committee? I, I don't have any, so.
You don't?
I would look for a motion then to, sorry, to approve the staff recommendation of awarding to the Brendel Group Inc. for the implementation of the Climate Action Plan.
So moved.
A second, second, great. Any other, just on the award? Any other questions? I don't know, so call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't need to cut that off, but look, you know, I'm, yeah, so, I mean, Jane, I don't know if you have, if you have suggestions for how to get those thoughts out of our brain. You know, feel free to, yeah, we can either schedule another group meeting or you can talk to us individually. Yeah, or, yeah, depending on how fast things move. Get us on a committee, a task force.
Yeah, I mean, their, their timeline originally was to start October, because our due date for the proposals mid-September. Obviously, we could be a little flexible with that, they're understanding, and they have the capacity to, to shift that a little bit. As soon as.
Yeah.
I don't know how long the contract, are you, Perry will take, would, maybe?
Take a little bit of a busy time, is what I would say, generally.
Before the end of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think your first meeting with them will be before, will be in December.
The faster you can get something from it, if it's more than a year, that's really good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, sorry, I think that was a good discussion to have, but again, sorry for everyone that we're running behind schedule a little bit. We'll just have to start, but yeah, these ones are gonna be so quick. Jane, I have number two, discussion and consideration of an agreement with Flatirons Inc. land surveying services for an American Land Title Association slash Professional Society of Professional Surveyors, Alta NSBS, oh, now I know what Alta stands for. Land Title Survey for School Parcel Number two six three three two three one one two zero one eight. The skinny strip.
The skinny strip, and then the two additional pieces at the top, which will be Ramont. So, we are, we've reached out to Flatirons, who conducted the survey when we had the flow study done through JBA. So, Flatirons has data points and they are able to get this done very timely. The cost is six thousand dollars and it is an unbudgeted expense, but there is money available. We have Ann's money in Ann's budget to cover this, and if not in Ann's budget, then we'll have some budget. So, there's some opportunity there, some funding, but it's unbudgeted, and I just want your approval before that, to make that happen as soon as possible. In addition to that, there's been also discussion with the school district about the triangle pieces that we previously talked about. We already had the school district for the housing project. And we have had work done, of course, on the site that we're developing, and so there are data points for that. And so, Marson Engineering could potentially get that done this year, nobody else could probably. And so there are data points for that, and so Marson Engineering could potentially get that done this year, nobody else could probably get that done this year. Um, so I'll come in before we.
Okay, but for now, we're talking about just that first strip you showed, okay, great. I don't have any.
I have no questions, no.
No questions?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the unbudgeted expense, uh, with Flatirons Inc. for the land surveying services. Um, for an Alta survey and N S P S survey for school parcel number two, six, three, three, two, three, one, one, two, zero, one, eight.
Second motion, great, final questions are?
No, thank you.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so that is approved, great, thank you. Uh, agenda item number three, discussion and consideration of an amendment to the sublease at seven thirty-five Highway twenty-four with Dr. Courtney Russell.
Yeah, so, uh, this is the public health D H S building, we have a lease with Dr. Lisa for it, but we also have a number of subleases, so some community care clinic. And Dr. Courtney Russell, who's a private practice psychologist in town, uh, she has found alternative, uh, office locations and. D H S public health could sure use extra office space, and so we are in a mutual agreement to move, it goes several ways. So hoping to just agree to break the sublease early.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for you.
Am I having any questions either?
Um, should I just say the amendment to the sublease or? Terminating the sublease? The amendment, okay, um, I'll move to approve the amendment to the sublease at seven thirty-five Highway twenty-four with Dr. Courtney Russell.
Second motion, great.
Nothing further from me.
Great, uh, call for a vote?
Uh, aye.
No.
Thank you.
Aye, 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 um, that amendment is approved, great, thank you, and with that, we close the special meeting, um, maybe just.